Welcome, everyone, to today's public hearing regarding the review of Blueprint Columbus and potential revisions to Chapter 1115. Today's hearing is about Blueprint Columbus and its green infrastructure and blue infrastructure improvements within the city of Columbus and how we can utilize, underutilize spaces to promote energy, I'm sorry, ecological advancements and as well as job creation. And I think it's important to note that the work that is being done by the Department of Public Utilities and led by Susan Ashbrook is cutting-edge. It's, I think, in my opinion, going to probably be a national model, if it hasn't already, in coordination with the Ohio EPA and our consent decree of how we can use what is required for Columbus to have clean water, clean sewer, and how we can utilize land that is there, you know, pretty much now underutilized, and how we can create jobs all at the same time. So what we're going to be doing is having two presentations, and we're going to, as with every public meeting that I hold in Utilities or any other committee, there will be a safety, or I'm sorry, safety, there'll be a, that's the other committee that I usually have hearings on. There'll be an opportunity for speakers. Anyone who wants to grab a speaker slip, you can do it right over there, grab a blue speaker slip, turn it over to Gretchen or Gina. And at the end of the meeting, we'll welcome speakers. But right now, we'll have Dr. Rick Westerfield, Department of Public Utilities, give his presentation.
Thank you, Chairman Klein. I'm here to talk about the proposed revisions to Chapter 1115 of the City Code, specifically the Well Field Protection Program. On October 23rd, 1990, the city of Columbus established a Well Field Protection Program by enacting Chapter 1115 of the City of Columbus Code. The purpose of the Well Head Protection Program is to protect from contamination the underground aquifer and the water supply of the Parsons Avenue Water Treatment Plant Well Field in southern Franklin County. This program is supported by the Ohio Revised Code, the Safe Drinking Water Act, and federal and state law. What is a Well Field Protection Zone? It's basically a boundary that is established based on water flow in the underground aquifer to the wells of the Parsons Avenue Water Treatment Plant. The boundary extends beyond city limits. Those properties within the Well Field Protection Zone have limitations regarding use of certain chemicals that could be deemed to be health hazards, and these properties must employ best practices to prevent groundwater contamination. The program is administered by the Department of Public Utilities, Division of Water. The proposed modifications of Chapter 1115, which was adopted 25 years ago, are mainly administrative in nature, clarify language of the existing code, and provide property owners and the Director of Public Utilities additional flexibility in how they utilize current technologies to protect the underground aquifer. Two specific revisions of note are: Chapter 1115 was originally written with specific deadlines set based on the effective date of the ordinance. The proposed revisions make Chapter 1115 more of a living document instead of a point-in-time document. And another noted revision is the requirement for the above-ground and underground storage tanks in Section 09 have been revised to allow the property owners in the Well Field Protection Area and the Director of Public Utilities more flexibility to incorporate modern technologies that are just as effective in protecting the south well field. However, they're more affordable for the property owners than a strict adherence to the secondary containment requirements as currently written. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding these proposed revisions.
So is there just one well field that is, the boundaries that's defined in Columbus City Code?
Yes, there's one well field, and it's, the boundaries of the Well Field Protection Zone are based upon the flow of water and how long that water travels through the underground aquifer to those wells.
So does this proposed legislative change change at all the boundary?
No, this does not change the boundary at all.
And help me understand the technological uses. Like, why do you need a code change to implement newer technology?
Yeah, sure. Currently, for example, if you have a, for example, a steel drum, a 55-gallon drum, you have to put in a containment system around that drum. And in order to deviate from that, you have to go through a waiver process, which is a process you go through to get the director to approve a waiver and that type of thing. What this does, this allows us to more directly consider new technology that might be alternative to a containment device, but may be more cost-effective and actually provide equal or better protection than the containment device itself.
So the code, as currently written, limits perhaps the containment to a steel drum?
Yes.
It doesn't allow newer technologies to contain the substance?
That's correct.
And that the code change, the proposed code change allows more flexibility for the substance to be in a contained manner?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. We will take this section under advisement, and I appreciate your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir, absolutely. Our next speaker is Susan Ashbrook.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Klein. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. I will be assisted in our presentation by Dax Blake, the Administrator of the Division of Sewers and Drains. Dax and I have been very fortunate over the last couple of years to be really heading up the Blueprint effort, and we're very pleased to present this tonight. I'm going to go over a little bit of the history and then what this legislation does. So we always begin by reminding everybody that this is not a voluntary effort. We were sued by Ohio EPA in 2002 and 2004 over sewer overflows, our combined sewer overflows, and our sanitary sewer overflows. In response to those two consent decrees, we submitted a plan in 2005, which we called the Wet Weather Management Plan, or the WOMP. That plan was a very aggressive plan, front-loaded a lot of work, and we've come a long way operating under that plan. Both plants have been upgraded significantly. They both treat 50% more water than they used to. And Councilmember Klein, you're very familiar with our Oars Tunnel project. It's been in front of you several times. It is nearing completion, and it will also remove many of our overflows, especially in the downtown area. So I always like to start by reminding people, this is not new. We've been at this for 10 years. And the good news is, we've already accomplished a lot. And I'll let Dax kind of quickly walk through this slide.
So basically, this graphic that you have in front of you now depicts the success we've seen from the initial 2005 wet weather plan that Susan just mentioned. So across the top there, you basically have rainfall, and I'd really like to point out that bar right there in the middle, that kind of, the blue bar that sticks way down, that's 2011, represents the single wettest year on record in the city of Columbus. But the orange bars are basically a summation of all the overflow we've seen from our system. And on July 1st, 2010, we had a major deadline with the original wet weather plan to have those plant improvements done. And you can pretty much see that from July 1st, or from 2010 on, a massive reduction in the amount of overflows we've had from our system. So 3.5 billion gallons back in 2007, and you look at 2012, and it's less than a half billion. So massive, massive reductions in the overflows, and obviously more to come. So a big thing now is our CSO plan has to be done by July 1, 2025. Major components of that, of course, were the plant work and the Oars Tunnel that's underway. So essentially, a lot of the CSO work is nearing completion. So we've spent about $1 billion, and we've basically taken about $1 billion gallons of overflow annually out of the river with that investment. So it's really, it's been a very effective use of funds. SSOs, on the other hand, not nearly as big of a volume, but we still have to deal with them, and we've got the tunnels there.
Sorry, did I catch my question?
Yes. Well, you're up here. But the SSOs aren't going to do anything for, or tunnels to deal with SSOs aren't going to do anything for stormwater, and those tunnels also aren't going to do much for local jobs. And so we really were looking for, is there a better way to deal with the remaining issues that we have to tackle on the consent orders? So that's where we looked at Blueprint, and this is actually as much, again, Susan and her big fanfare point, but investing in our infrastructure and also bringing the local jobs in as well. So making the existing sanitary system better, keeping out the rainwater. So we've got a lot of stormwater that gets into our sanitary system that doesn't belong there, and that's really what causes overflows and basement backups. So stopping that water from getting in in the first place, you know, treating that excess rainwater that's going into the sanitary system with green infrastructure, so now we're making stormwater better as well. And then that also brings resources, funds, and improvements to the local neighborhoods. Whereas those tunnels would be deep underground, sight unseen. I mean, essentially, you've had this Oars Tunnel go right past City Hall, but you never saw it. You know, this is going to bring this work up to the surface and bring benefit into the actual residential neighborhoods.
And so that, it looks like the focus from the department, therefore, has shifted from below ground, dealing with the requirements of the EPA consent decree, to above ground?
Absolutely.
To where the projects are visible, the projects have an economic impact, they make a difference in the quality of life of our neighborhoods, instead of just drilling 25 stories below Columbus, where we just, as you mentioned, that the tunnel just went right by us. We didn't know it until I took a crane 20 stories below the ground to get into the tunnel. That this now is moving above ground to a more of a tangible feel of how our required investment from the Ohio EPA consent decree is transforming our neighborhoods and our environmental responsibilities.
Very well put, I would agree. So in 2012, basically, we went to Ohio EPA, integrated planning was becoming something that US EPA was promoting as an alternative to deep tunnels. And so we saw that as an opportunity to approach Ohio EPA, who we have our consent orders with. They gave us permission to pursue this. We submitted our plan this past September, and frankly, I think we've pretty much set a record in the state and maybe the country in terms of obtaining Ohio EPA's concurrence on this program. So they're big fans of what we're trying to do as well. So a month, or two and a half months, and we basically have their approval. And they've been a great partner in this effort as well, so. But the plan focuses on four pillars, and those four pillars are basically going to take that stormwater that's getting into the sanitary and direct it away, and also then ultimately treat that stormwater for, with green infrastructure. So that's, the four pillars basically are a mandatory lateral lining program that's lining the pipe that connects the homes into the city sewer system. So every home has a lateral that connects it into the sanitary sewer system. Also, those rooftops, a lot of times the rooftops might have a lateral that goes out to the curb and discharges rooftop water to the street. In the older neighborhoods, those don't exist, or they failed long ago, and they need to be replaced or maintained. So to reestablish that rooftop connection back out to the street, that prevents that water from being able to get down into the foundation drains. It ultimately can lead into the sanitary sewer system. A voluntary sump pump program, this too, is again trying to prevent the water that's in the foundation drainage system of a home from getting into the sanitary. And then, of course, all that water that's going to be directed from the roof and the sump pumps out to the street ultimately goes into the green infrastructure. And then, as I think you already mentioned, this provides an opportunity to utilize existing city land as well as vacant properties to treat the stormwater with that green infrastructure.
And I would add to that, that the mandatory lateral lining in particular is a benefit to the homeowners in the areas where we would be working, because normally, that's a homeowner expense. And these are all older homes, all built before the '60s, and eventually, those laterals will fail, and normally, the homeowner would have to go out and replace that or repair it. So we're actually, again, investing in the infrastructure of our system, but it's actually helping the homeowners as well, which leads us right into the advantages of Blueprint, which are many. I guess it didn't lead us into it. There we go. So first of all, I'd like to, we'd like to point out where this summer, the costs really came together, and we're very pleased to report that the Blueprint plan that we submitted to Ohio play is significantly cheaper than the original plan. The original plan, in today's dollars, or $2015, would be close to 3.5 billion, and Blueprint is 1.7 billion. So Blueprint is definitely cheaper than if we had just held the course and not taken a look at revising our approach. So that's very good news. It's also very good news that the Blueprint is actually predicted to actually work better than the tunnels. We're going to have fewer overflows and fewer basement backups with Blueprint than if we had just stuck with the tunnel. We're actually able to shorten the schedule as well, so it's going to be finished in 20 years instead of 30. Again, the emphasis on repairing and renewing existing infrastructure. We think we're going to be adding value to neighborhoods. I had the chance to present to the Clintonville Area Commission last week regarding a porous pavement street that we're going to be putting in in Dominion. There's actually about four blocks we're going to be doing, but one of them is in Dominion. And that's a street that they've long, the neighborhood has long wanted a sidewalk for because of the schools there, and we were able to include a sidewalk in our project, and we worked with public service to get them to extend it to the rest of the way to the school. So everyone's very, very happy with that improvement. It's going to help us with our stormwater, but it's really going to help the neighborhood as well, as you were describing earlier. Another big plus for us is the local workforce. Dax mentioned, you know, that this is our local jobs. The current tunnel that's being built, it's all out-of-state, out-of-country companies. So a lot of those profits are just a river of money leaving the city, and this will all be done by local workforce. We also conducted a lot of outreach. This is such a different approach. We felt it was very important to really try to test the community's acceptance of it, and that outreach was very positive. So here are a couple, just real quick pictures of some examples. This is an existing, the old South Side Settlement House. This is what it used to look like. We're going to be able to collect all the stormwater from that area that's on the right, outlined in red, and treat it in this park. It's going to treat about four acres' worth of land, which is a big benefit to us, but it's also going to be an amenity, as the next slide will show. We're going to, there's already, I don't know if you've been down there lately, but there's already a porous pavement basketball court there and some playground equipment. Construction should be done this year. I think the plannings will be done next year, but it's going to look a lot better, and it's going to be a true amenity for the neighborhood.
So the previous slide had kind of the four-acre imprint of where the water accumulates, and now it's going to be pushed to this park?
Correct.
And where does it go once, like, it's subsurface in the park?
Once it's treated with the green infrastructure, it'll outlet to a storm sewer and then go to the river. So it will basically not go into the combined system, it will go into a storm sewer and go to the river, but it will have the benefit of being treated by the green infrastructure.
It'll also slow the water down, delay it, which will also help control the overflow points, because it's the peaks that really drive that. And then some of the water ultimately is going to infiltrate into the ground, so it's going to become part of the underground water system that flows all the time.
Here's an example. This isn't exactly what we're doing in Clintonville, but it's, we are doing a couple alleys there. So this is like an existing alley, and this is how green infrastructure can really clean that up. So basically, you put in the porous pavement, you put in the new storm sewer for the water to eventually make it down into the storm sewer, and you have just a much better system. It's going to drain better, it's going to provide us benefits in terms of treating the stormwater, but as Dax said, also preventing it from infiltrating into the sanitary sewer and keeping it, you know, into the storm sewer. So that's another improvement. I just wanted to quickly show you these highlights of our outreach. Again, we spent quite a bit of time, we had a consultant going to a lot of road events, we surveyed hundreds of people, we had thousands and thousands of pieces of literature sent out. And overall, the takeaway that we got from Reima, who was our outreach consultant, is that folks are concerned about the price tag, and they're concerned about their water bills, but once they understand that there is no do-nothing alternative, and we have to spend money on something, folks overwhelmingly prefer this. We also had advisory panel, it had a very diverse makeup. They met for two years. That diverse makeup, by the way, included Councilmember Fran Ryan, who is now claiming that she graduated from sewer school, as she calls it. But it was a very good process. We really spent a lot of time educating them, and they were overwhelmingly supportive of Blueprint and submitted an approval letter to Ohio EPA. So that brings us to the legislation. So why do we need the legislation? So as we've been explaining, the key to Blueprint is really controlling this water that's coming in from private property. What we have found over and over again in our analysis, and we've been studying this closely for decades, is that the majority of this water is coming from private property. And we cannot eliminate these overflows without addressing private property. The city maintains its public structures. We line our sewers, and we take care of our structures. Homeowners don't really have any incentive to do that kind of work, as long as they're basically, as long as their toilets flushing. So we really have to address this excessive water, and we need to do it comprehensively. We can't take, we need, individual permission is too uncertain and too timely, untimely, I mean. And we really need to be able to guarantee to Ohio EPA certain participation levels. So that's why we need the legislation. Of the four pillars that Dax described earlier, there are two that relate to private property. One is the lateral lining. The way that lining will be done in almost all instances, it's from a machine that's inside the city sewer, so it's not a matter of digging up somebody's front yard, and you launch that, launch the relining from inside the sewer, it goes up the lateral, you fill it with hot water, and when you're done, you basically have new PVC pipe. It may require access to basements in certain cases, or requiring digging a small spot for a cleanout in folks' homes. We've already done this in several hundred homes in Clintonville on a pilot area basis, and I've already learned a lot about how to do this. And the, we had Reima do a focus group with us for the folks that have been through it, and the results were very positive. Our contractors did a good job of working with people. People were happy that they were being left with basically a brand-new lateral.
So how does it, how does it work? If the legislation passes, and, you know, this is declared a nuisance, and you need to access someone's basement, what's the, what's the policy? What's the proposed procedure going to be to gain that access?
So the legislation just gives us the tools, and then in terms of how we'll actually use those tools, the legislation doesn't necessarily direct. But what we've been doing so far is we've been basically contacting the homeowner and asking for permission to access the basements if we need it. And that will be, continue to be our process. We're not going to use the legislation, obviously. We can't use the legislation to storm into people's homes without permission. So it'll all be on a, if we need to get into your basement for some, and for most people, we will not need to get into their basement. That is the exception, not the rule. So vast majority, one of the things we found out with this pilot was people would come home at night and say, "I thought you were coming out today," and we were like, "Yeah, we were there," and they didn't even know. So that will be the exception. But for those folks, we'll contact them and try to get permission to get into their basements, and explain to them what the legislation's about, and why we need it, and what we'll be doing, and, you know, and try to work that out.
And then, God, what happens if someone refuses entry?
I mean, I suppose in theory, we could try to get a search warrant. I'm guessing what we're going to do is skip that house. And in our modeling, when we were estimating how many people would participate, we never assumed 100%.
Okay.
So in reality, we can skip houses if we need to.
Okay.
If there's somebody who's just irretrievably opposed to letting us in, it would be easier to skip that house than not.
Okay.
So the second pillar that relates to home property is, again, that roof water redirection. That is much less standardized than the lateral, and we're, quite frankly, assuming a far less participation in terms of how many houses will be participating. But again, what the legislation does is it authorizes us to try to get that roof redirected at least seven feet away from the house. So Councilmember Klein, as you already mentioned, the theory that we're using is a nuisance theory, and I should point out that we have had outside counsel and the city attorney's office research this pretty thoroughly. As you know, city council has very broad authority to declare something a nuisance, and we have drafted what we call the Engineers Report. It is accompanying the legislation, it's attached as one of the attachments. It really lays out the evidence that links this excessive water, that it is coming from private homes, and all the II studies that we've done over the years. And it also links that that excessive II is what's causing sewage to get into people's basements and into our rivers. And that's the public health threat that city council has the authority to declare a nuisance. So I think it's important to understand, we're not declaring neighborhoods a nuisance, we're not declaring homes a nuisance. It is that excessive water, that rainwater that should not legally be in the sanitary sewer, that is what's causing the nuisance. And it's that excessive I&amp;I that is the problem.
So is the legislation written where city council is declaring the nuisance? Because in other instances of nuisance declaration, doesn't the department director declare a nuisance? And why is city council making the determination versus the individual department?
So what the, what I think other legislation does, and this is mirrored on it, is city council declares certain conditions are a nuisance, but then the details of where and how and when. So legislation declares excessive grass to be a nuisance condition, but you don't say 123 Smith Road is a nuisance. You say grass that is excessive, or weeds that are excessive, is a nuisance. And that does need to come from city council. That's a city council prerogative. But we're not asking you to declare any specific neighborhood or any specific situation the nuisance. What we're asking city council to find is that excessive infiltration and inflow is causing our sanitary sewers to put raw sewage into people's basements and into the river, and that's a nuisance condition.
So procedurally, would this match, you keep mentioning grass, one thing is a good example, would this match that in the sense that council, if enacted, would then declare the I&amp;I a nuisance, and then the department would figure out which areas, just like the Department of Development would figure out which house would have high grass?
Absolutely.
Is that the analogy? Is that the parallel that's being drawn here?
Absolutely. And the department, as, again, similar, would also decide, you know, what the priorities are and what to do about people who are objecting to it, and all of the administrative details should be left to the department. What city council has the prerogative to do under Ohio case law is the finding of what conditions would create a nuisance.
Okay.
So the legislation determines, as I said, that excessive I&amp;I is causing the overflows, and that that is a public health threat, and establishes the program, and then authorizes the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to then administer that program, including details such as making a area-by-area determination, determining what is needed to abate that, et cetera.
So is the geographic boundaries, I know there's some pilot programs in certain areas that are already going on, that are scheduled to be done. Is the Blueprint project a citywide program at the end of the day, or is this going to be neighborhood-specific?
So for the first 20 years, the first 20 years that we have program that we believe will get us to the end of sewer overflows is specific neighborhoods. And it's what you would expect. It's kind of the ring of older neighborhoods. It's really houses built before the 1960s that are the big problem. And we've identified those in the report, but we're not identifying those in the legislation because it could change as we learn more. When we get to the end of that 20 years, the houses that are now not a problem, will they have become a problem because they're 20 years older, and will the program need to continue? That's very possible, but I'll be retired, so somebody else will have to figure that out.
Okay.
But seriously, 20 years from now, whether or not the program will need to continue to make sure that we continue to stay on top of maintaining infrastructure is an open question.
And what about, you mentioned sump pumps earlier.
Yes, sir.
Is that something that if a house doesn't have a sump pump, is that a requirement? Was that something the city pays for? Like, how does the sump pump mechanism come into factor with the Blueprint plan?
That's a great question, Councilmember. What we have found is that sump pumps are really, really good technology. For this whole getting I&amp;I out of the system, sump pumps are probably better than anything else we're talking about, but they're very invasive. They require going into the basement, they require jackhammering up, you know, holes, that kind of thing. We didn't think we should start by asking for mandatory sump pump program. So what we're proposing is a voluntary sump pump program, so therefore, we don't need legislation, which is why it's not included in here. But we're going to do a voluntary sump pump program for any area where we're applying Blueprint. We've already started getting a list of volunteers in Clintonville, and we need to get, we're, we really need to get a high percent, not a high percentage, about 25% participation in each area that we go into, in most areas that we go into. So we'll be really selling those sump pumps, but we believe it should be voluntary, and only if the homeowner wants it.
So does that mean that... So, does that mean that the city pays for the sump pump and installation for a home that voluntarily chooses to have a sump pump?
Yes, sir. So, in these Blueprint areas that we're going into, if somebody doesn't have a sump pump and will take a sump pump, it will really help us a lot. So, we pay for it, you know, we're going to work with the homeowner on it, but it all costs us. Everything in Blueprint is all cost to us.
As part of the consent decree?
Correct. And it's that 1.7 billion, I mentioned earlier.
That's the price tag that includes?
That's the price tag.
The lining, the potential sump pump utilization, the green infrastructure?
The green infrastructure, yes, everything.
Okay.
Yes.
Even additional plant improvements and stuff are included in that 1.7 billion. One more thing I would tack on to what Susan just talked about with the sump pumps and the rooftop is essentially, it's bringing the home up to a current standard for construction. So, if you were to build a new house today, you would build it with a sump pump. You would build it with the rooftops redirected. So, this is taking these older homes and bringing them up to a more current state of code.
I think I have one more slide. So, we've just kind of talked about this, but just to summarize, what the legislation that we're asking to enact authorizes is implementation of the following steps. First, it allows us to investigate the areas, which we've been doing currently, TV-ing lines, that kind of thing. Then it allows us to take the corrective measures. And again, that's rehabbing or replacing the private service lateral, and then disconnecting and reconnecting, I'm sorry, disconnecting or redirecting the downspouts. The legislation doesn't address, I'm sorry, it does address this voluntary sump pump program. I forgot that, I apologize. It just authorizes the city to do a voluntary sump pump program. The legislation specifically requires us to provide restoration of the yard and all costs on the city. So, there are no direct costs to any of the homeowners on any of this.
What would be the necess, give me a circumstance of why you would need yard restoration?
So, for the roof water redirect, we may, if you've got a roof that just has a downspout either connected directly into the foundation drain, or just has a small splash block, we would like to get that out to the street, so we might have to trench through your yard.
Okay.
And what we've found is the companies that do these now, you literally just can often just move the sod over and then put the sod back, and it's not anything like putting in a sanitary sewer that's eight feet deep.
Sure. Okay. I think I asked all my questions as they arose. I don't have, I don't have any more questions, and, pardon me. Do we have any speaker slips, y'all? No? Any other comments, Dax, Susan?
No, we're just very excited about the program and appreciate your time.
Okay.
And we appreciate all the support we've gotten from city council over the last couple of years. Thank you.
All right, well, that concludes the hearing that we have for Public Utilities. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you.